Good morning. Today is the 10th day of October. The time is 10 o'clock. The Board of Commissioners is in session. All three Commissioners are present. If we could get you to introduce yourself for the record, starting over here.
Emily Burns. Nicole Marto, Clerk's Office.
Barclay, Operations.
Peter Wardy, Clerk's Office.
Rob Brown, Treasurer's Office.
Tim Kong, Treasurer's Office.
Elizabeth Duncan, Reporter's Office. Katie Lewis, Reporter's Office.
Mark Johnson, Visitor.
Serena Bowden, Visitor.
Donna Wilk, Visitor.
Who's the boy on your left?
David Jackson.
Oh, hey, Jackson. Okay, go ahead.
Colson Brown and Alyssa Brown. I have River and Atlas Fenwick.
This is my daughter Alyssa. I'm Bonnie Overbillig, Recorder's Office. This is River. Right? Atlas, sorry.
The twins.
Matt Reed, Commissioner's Office.
Elizabeth Duncan, Communications.
IT guy.
Katie Reed, Clerk's Office.
Robin Swainy, Procurement.
Vicki Bailey, Recorder's Office.
Shane Dogg, Recorder's Office.
Tracy Hunt, Recorder's Office.
Lindy Wheeler, Clerk's Office.
Okay.
Trent Triple, County Clerk.
Alyssa Ellington, Procurement.
Rebecca Arnold, Assessor.
Okay. Well, thank you. Now we have a full house. We bet where we ring out chairs.
Few people on the bridge as well.
Yeah. Tom Saut, Jessica Donalds on the bridge. Okay, Madam Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, there are not.
Okay, the first item up is a correction to the record. Correction to the 9/28 Open Business Meeting. The polling places, we've changed a couple of them, correct?
Changed one. We actually didn't change it. It was a clerical error.
Clerical error, all right.
We wanted to update the list of one polling location that was not changed physically, but on the list that was approved by the Commissioners. Previously, we had a wrong location, so it's been updated.
We need a motion on that to update the clerical error.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the correction to the September 28, 2023 Open Business Meeting agenda.
I'll second that. Okay, well, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, next up, we have a employee recognition. I think I'll read that. Bonnie Overbillig. Okay. "Began her career with Ada County on October 1, 1998, as a deputy recorder and promoted to a lead recording clerk on October 1, 2017. Bonnie has worked in the Recorder's Office for 25 years, under four clerks, Dave Navarro, Chris Rich, Phil McGrane, and Trent Triple. Now that is stamina." "Bonnie has seen the construction of the courthouse, the implementation of new systems, and the change in recording standards throughout the years. In 2020, she assisted in streamlining office processes and helped create the online alcohol license renewal system. Bonnie is an infallible asset to the county and will assist any office in need. Her knowledge, expertise, and professionalism support the mission to build trust in government, and we could not imagine our office without her." Okay, great. Congratulations, Bonnie. Anybody in the room want to say anything?
I think Heather does.
Heather?
I have a few words. So, some amazing things happened in 1998. Armageddon saving Private Ryan topped the box office. The Apple Computers unveiled the iMac. The New York Yankees had a four-game sweep to win the World Series. And Bonnie Overbillig was hired in the Recorder's Office. I cannot say enough great things about Bonnie and how valuable she is to both our office and our team. When I first started with Ada County, Chris Rich said, "To do my job well, just do whatever Bonnie tells me to do." And he was on to something there. Bonnie is a wealth of knowledge, and she is one of our best resources in the Recorder's Office. We regularly have attorneys and title companies call to get her take on documents or her opinions on how to correct an error, which I think speaks volumes on how respected she is throughout the community. I truly appreciate the last seven years that I've had getting to work with Bonnie, and I can't wait to see what the next 25 years bring. And yes, I'm committing you to another 25 years."
Okay, anybody else?
Sure, I'd just like to say, thank you. You know, you know what our mission in our office is, and the citizens that walk in and get serviced by the Recorder's Office. Your face is the one that they always remember and see. And we largely have a citizenry that trusts what the Recorder's Office does. And that didn't happen without you. So, thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, anybody else?
As much as she is needed and valued here, she's also loved and valued at home. If not, bored.
Okay, well, great. Anybody else? No? Well, come up here and we'll give you the award. Take a picture. Congratulations. What's longer us enduring four different clerks?
Well, hopefully Trent sticks around as long as I do.
I'm not going anywhere. Well, yeah. Well, Bonnie, on behalf of the citizens of Ada County, present this award for your 25 years of valued service. Thank you. Thank you.
And I'm sure that you've had to endure jokes about your name because of your job, because to me, it always sounds like overbilling.
It means in German, though. It means overly cheap.
Be like that. Tell us again who your family is here today with you.
So, this is my oldest daughter Alyssa, and her three boys, her two boys. And then this is my youngest daughter, her oldest son Titan, and her two twins.
Wow.
Nice. Very nice.
Nice to meet you.
Nice.
Nice to meet you guys. Thanks for supporting your mom and your grandma.
Okay, it's always nice to have a recognition.
25 years is a big one.
Absolutely, yeah. Well, like I say, the bigger one is enduring four separate clerks.
That was the easy part.
That's the easy part. Okay, moving on, we have volunteer boards. We have a Central District Health Board appointment. And I've asked Commissioner Daley to articulate the kind of the process that we went through and what we're looking for. Go ahead.
Well, I guess for the Commissioners, we appreciate the fact that Central District Health was, one, viewed as important. Counties have been given increased responsibility by the Legislature over the Central District Health budgets, et cetera. So, we appreciate the fact that it's viewed differently by the community than maybe it was before. What we did when we had a vacancy is we asked for the community to come up with applications. If people are interested, like we do any board that we have, we ask for people who are interested in being members of the board. We did that over a period of time. We had good candidates who came forward. And we set the criteria that we wanted when we outlined that, and it was, one, they had to have a knowledge of Central District Health, some knowledge of Central District Health, knowledge of participation in boards and/or commissions or committees, and a knowledge of finance and budgeting. Those were the criteria that we wanted people, before they applied, to at least have an expression of those, knowledge in those kinds of things. So, and we have to understand as well that it's the Central District Health, and it's comprised of four counties, and the four counties recommend members to the board, and that's what it is. It's a recommendation. So, what we will do today is recommend to the other counties. We don't support that idea. We think our applications, like any county application should be, and we've asked the Legislature to change that. But as it is now, we will be making a recommendation to the other counties, and we hope they support our recommendation. So, that's the outline process. We interviewed those candidates, and we now have looked at the other five candidates.
Was it five that we had? Five candidates. And I might add, they were all very well-qualified candidates, I thought. I thought we were fortunate to have people of that caliber who applied to make an application. And in fact, some of them indicated that if they didn't make it onto the Central District Health, if we had other volunteer boards that they would like to participate, which is encouraging, I think, because we did have, we need good people all across the board on our volunteers. Anyway, so, the question is, we have an application, or we have an appointment to make. And again, as Commissioner Daley indicated, this is, we like to call it an appointment. We appoint a person, and then the other counties have to ratify our appointment.
Correct.
And so, the way that works is the appointee has to get at least seven out of 12 votes. And I think we'll get that or more now. Anyway, what's the pleasure of the board? Is there?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a nomination for Greg Furch to fill this vacant seat on Central District Health. Can I speak to the nomination?
Yeah.
Well, I think Greg Furch meets all the qualifications that we're looking for. I think he has the most substantial experience out of all the candidates. He's a former legislator, served on the Health and Welfare Committee in the Legislature, so has a strong interest in health. Somebody who's been through the Legislature, I think, understands the dynamic of a committee system better than most. He has medical experience as a chiropractor, runs his own practice in Boise, and has a desire to serve, which I think is very important. So, based on, I think, meeting all the qualifications we've outlined, having a great record in the Legislature, that's why I'm nominating Greg Furch.
Okay, do you have a second to the motion?
I would second the motion and make comments as well. I think, again, analyzing the candidates, and I think Greg has 11 years of medical experience in the military. He has a degree in biology, so he has the medical side of it, and he understands Central District Health, which is our first criteria. As Commissioner Davidson mentioned, he was in the Legislature, so he understands the committee process and the boards and commissions. He also has served in his medical practice. He's served on boards and commissions in his medical practice as well. And having been a small business owner, I know he knows budgeting. If he survived small business for the length of time that he has, he knows budgeting and how to manage budgeting, which is an important part for us, especially in Ada County, because Central District Health is four counties. But because of Ada County's population, we, and the Legislature set it up so that we contribute to the Central District Health budget based on our population. So, Ada County contributes the lion's share of the budget for Central District Health. So, budgeting is critically important to the process of Commissioners, members of the Central District Health. So, with all of that, I would second the motion.
Well, thank you. Yes, and I would. I'll just point out, we did receive a lot of interest from the community. We got several endorsements. Maybe our Clerk Matthew could summarize what community response we got regarding these nominations.
We received probably just shy of about 50 emails from members of the community, including other chiropractors who've been familiar with him in that capacity, members of the Republican Party legislators, precinct committee members who work with him there, as well as just citizens who've been, maybe patients of his, all strongly endorsing him. Really no criticism of him received. Seems like everybody he's worked with gave us any feedback.
Yeah, I think of note, I have his application here. I didn't know, I've known Greg a while, but I didn't know this. "I have 11 years of experience working in numerous hospitals and clinics in an Army, as an Army medic. I've driven ambulances, worked with medevac helicopters, and trained in setting up field hospitals. I have experience working with field sanitation, potable water protection, and mass casualty scenarios. I'm a Desert Storm veteran." I think amongst his other qualifications, that those rank right up on the top, my mind. Okay, well, any other statements or anything you want to make before we vote? Hearing that, the question is, shall we appoint Greg Furch to the Central District Health? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. So, what happens now is his name will go over to the Central District Health, and the Central District Health will then send a ballot around to the other three counties. Okay, well, good enough. Thank you. All right, now we have some unfinished business. I'd take a motion to remove unfinished business from the table.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to remove the unfinished business from the table for consideration.
I'm taking the motion.
Yeah, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. All right, first amount of unfinished business is the final ranking and request to enter fee negotiations for RFQ 23077, Design Services for Ada County Elections Office and Warehouse Remodel.
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. The evaluation team for RFQ 23077 has completed the initial evaluation of the qualification statements, but we'd like to interview the top two candidates. Therefore, we would like to request to re-table the final rankings and request to enter fee negotiations to the October 17, 2023 Open Business Meeting for further consideration.
Okay, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to accept the final rankings for RFQ 23077, Design Services for Ada County Elections Office and Warehouse Remodel, and authorize the staff to enter into fee negotiations, starting with the number one ranked firm.
Just to be clear, did you ask for, was that the motion you asked for, or did you ask to table?
Sorry, to re-table it to the October 17.
Okay, so we're not quite ready to make this motion.
Yeah, we table it till the 17th.
Okay, I make that motion and table it until October 17?
And I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. It's tabled till the 17th. Next up, an unfinished business, review of a protest bid of 23069, Ada County Trial and Court Administration Treatment Center Improvement. Table from 10-3.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. At the October 3, 2023 Open Business Meeting, Procurement brought before you a protest by Radix Construction. The basis of their protest was that Procurement found them non-responsive for not submitting a bid bond with their bid submittal for bid 23069. There were instructions on how to submit the bid bond, and the instructions to bidders that outlined how to submit the bid bond and a checkoff list that helped to make sure that they submit all the required documents. And the other 10 bidders did exactly this. Additionally, Idaho Code 672805 specifically states that if we ask for a bid bond, it has to be submitted at the time of bid submittal. If it's not, it cannot be considered. You have had the opportunity to review this protest and whether it has merit. And based on what Radix Construction has provided in their protest email and documents, does the board want to uphold the protest, or does the board want to reject the protest?
So, eat a motion.
Well, let me ask a couple of questions first. This is only the second protest I've ever seen since I got elected. This one seems to be a little more substantial than the previous one we got. They made a lot of arguments. Some seemed credible. Can you maybe just summarize what some of their points were? And what, I guess, so that's largely going to be reviewed by your office with recommendations to ours. So, maybe kind of go over what some of the issues were and how our office and your office dealt with it.
Commissioner, I don't have their specific protest in front of me. I apologize. And Bob is out today. But from what I understand, it's really kind of what I summarized, but they, basically, they didn't submit it, and they are arguing that, you know, that we didn't provide enough information that, you know, supports that they had to submit it with their bid. I think that's really it in a summary.
Because it kind of, if I recall, it kind of sounded like they maybe attempted to submit things, but they couldn't navigate their way through the website or...
They had noted on their bid form that they had a bid bond, but they failed to scan it in with their bid, basically. So, I think their argument was that it was obvious that they got one, but didn't actually submit a copy as we require. Yeah, and like I stated, all 10 other bidders did submit theirs. We've not had this issue in a long time that I can remember with others. So, I mean, that just adds to kind of why we feel that they're non-responsive.
And if they had properly submitted everything, would they have been ranked first place?
They were a little bitter.
Yeah, they were a little bitter.
So, if this, if their objection is sustained, what would be the process after that? They're just considered to be filed timely?
They would be considered non-responsive, and then we would award the second lowest.
Well, if we overturn, if we uphold their protest?
I don't think we can because of what Idaho Code states, but I don't know. I apologize. I was not a part of all the conversations with Bob and the team, but that's what I understand on my end.
Well, anyway, any other questions?
I don't think so.
All right. Well, we need to make a motion. Is there a motion?
It seems to me that if they're non-responsive, the question about that was up.
Mr. Chairman, it's my understanding that the law doesn't allow us, if they weren't responsive to the bid, correct?
Yeah, that's what the law says. And... Oh, look who popped up.
Oh.
Bob. Bob's at a conference.
Oh, okay.
Oh, hello, Bob. All right.
If Bob has anything to add.
Well, for the record, just for legal reasons, might be good for Bob to weigh in, just to make sure we cover all the due... Just to make sure we cover all the due process of this, if he can answer.
If he, if he can hear us and then.
He hears Bob.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, yeah, I can hear you just fine.
All right.
Um, I'm at a conference right now, but, uh, I was listening in. Um, Radix Construction, as, uh, listed stated, did not submit their bid bond with their bid submittal. Uh, Idaho Code doesn't let, allow us to even, uh, accept their pro- or their bid based on that fact. So it'd be our recommendation that you deny the protest.
All right, well, I'll accept a motion.
With that, uh, Mr. Chairman, then I move to deny Radix Construction's protest bid twenty-three zero-sixty-nine Ada County Trial Court Administrator Treatment Center Tenant Improvement based on that the bid was not submitted in a legal, under the law, legally under the law.
Was non-responsive.
Right, non-responsive.
All right, is there a mo- is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thanks, Commissioners.
Thank you. Enjoy your conference.
Great, will do. Thanks.
Now we have the award of bid number two-three-zero-six-nine Ada County, uh, Trial Court Administration Treatment Center Tenant Improvement.
All right, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the evaluation team has reviewed the bids received for bid two-three-zero-six-nine and would like to submit this recommendation to award letter for your consideration.
Could you read the letter?
Yes. Um, so, dear members of the board, after receiving the bid submitted, it's the recommendation of the evaluation group to award the contract for bid two-three-zero-six-nine to HC Company, Inc. as the lowest responsive bidder for the total bid amount of two million, three hundred seventy-five thousand, seven hundred fifty-four dollars.
What was the name of the company again?
HC Company, Inc.
Where are they located?
Um, well, I'm, I don't know where the headquarters are, but I know they do have a local presence.
All right, I'll accept the motion.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I'll move to accept the recommendation of the Evaluation Committee and award bid two-three-zero-six-nine Ada County Trial Court Administration Treatment Center Tenant Improvement to HC Company, Inc. in the amount of two million, three hundred and seventy-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty-four dollars.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. All right, now we're on the new business. We have change order number eleven, Ada County Coroner's Office Replacement Facility Project Agreement Number fourteen-five-seventy, increase of two hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, unfortunately, well, it's not unfortunately, it's just that towards the end of the project, things just come up and they, we have to. This is a critical time where a lot of things just start cropping up.
Uh, and what's the, what's the two hundred thousand for?
It's ju- just for, uh, different things that have come up that we need to, um, address. It'll be, sometimes.
Just once, our clerk's asking if you could come to the table, so he picks it up on the mic, cause the mic doesn't pick it up over there.
Thank you.
Uh, it's just things that come up, and, uh, architectural, I mean, sometimes it doesn't always match up with things, so, uh, we have to add things, subsidies, uh, just things that don't match up with the drawings. And, um, they add things, and so it's just unfortunate. It's just towards the end of the project, a lot of things come up where it's, that were either were missed or we recognize things that card readers sometimes that need to be added.
Are these change orders, so they're original contract?
Uh, no. No, the, uh, the C O R's change order requests are not part of the original contract. That's why we have the contingency, so they can be payable.
Okay.
Well, the contingency was never, never really enough in the first place. I mean, it was only two hundred thousand in the beginning, and usually there's a percentage that is with contingencies, so, yeah.
Unless we'll, unless we'll complete the project.
We have sat down and we have ruled everyone to make sure that everything that we, we've put everything out on the table and, yes.
Are those connections for the generator?
No.
They're not here yet.
They're here. They're at the, uh, electrician's site. Uh, we just don't have the, the belly tanks for those yet. That's, that's what the generators sit on top of, is the belly tanks. So we're, we're still waiting for the belly tanks. We're hoping that they'll ship out by the twenty-second of this month. I know, and, yeah, we've had a lot of, um.
I didn't know about the belly tanks.
Yeah, yeah, and there's been equipment that's been delayed, and, I mean, it's just the atmosphere at the moment where it's just, um, yeah, things have been delayed.
Well, we've saved a bunch of money recently on a few projects, right?
I have, yeah, I have.
Okay. Uh, well, accept the motion.
I'll move to approve change order number eleven Ada County Coroner's Office Replacement Facility Project, as listed on the agenda, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. All right, now we have change order number one Benjamin Campus Security System Project, decrease of three thousand, four hundred and ninety-two dollars and nineteen cents. Any question or discussion?
Send it right to the coroner's facility, I guess.
Fraction of it.
We're, just on this project overall, Mr. Chair, if I might, we're grateful for this project. It's increased our security out at elections specifically, uh, and addressed some of the things that we've, uh, had highlighted in a, um, an assessment done out at that building, so we appreciate the support.
No more buttons to push, you mean?
No more buttons, uh, keypad, and we control the, the, uh, access to those cards. So it's been a very good project for us, and glad it's, glad it's finished.
Well, I'll accept the motion.
I move to approve change order number one Benjamin Campus Security System Project, as listed on the agenda, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that.
Thank you. You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you. All right, moving on to, uh, licenses. We have, uh, a couple of, we have a catering permit, a new license, and a license transfer. I'll accept a motion.
I move to approve the licenses as listed on the agenda, including one catering permit, one new license, and one license tran- transfer, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Uh, excuse me, I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, we have with us, we're fortunate to have our distinguished clerk with us today. Uh, would you like to give us an update, or?
Things are going smoothly on all fronts for us, knock on wood. Um, there, uh, ballots, absentee ballots, ninety-one hundred of them have been requested, and we have sent those out in two different tranches. And every couple of days, we'll continue to send out new ones as they come in, either via mail or the online voter registration system through the Secretary of State's office. So we're, we're happy on that front. There was a glitch on our mapper system that we're fixing right now that didn't match up with, um, the type of ballot that people could expect in their sample ballot. Uh, but we're, we're working with, uh, the assessor's office to fix that, uh, glitch. It doesn't affect the actual ballot that people get, uh, but as they look up on their own, there's some, some issues with the annexation of Havamore to Eagle City. Uh, so we're working through those. Um, there's different processes. We haven't had an annexation of this size forever. So, um, there, we're, we're working through that. But, uh, other than that, everything's going very smoothly. The rollout of the new financial system, good news, people are buying things and the process is working. So, uh, we're continuing to fine tune that, um, and, uh, those are real the big updates for us. Uh, so, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Good, thank you. Okay, uh, next up's the claims journal. I'll accept a motion on the claims journal.
I move to authorize payment of the claims on the claims journal, dated October sixth, twenty-twenty-three.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Next up, we have personnel actions.
I'll move to approve the personnel actions as listed on the agenda, and that the summary sheet remain on file in the Commissioner's office.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. All right, next up, we have, uh, with us our distinguished assessor, Becca. Arnold, would you like to give us a?
Yes, good morning, Commissioners. I just have a little interesting news to share. Um, the property tax reduction program and the property tax benefit for veterans, we had a record year. The total number of applicants was five thousand and forty-five, so. I think, uh, I would commend my staff on doing a good job with marketing, and Elizabeth also helped with that to, um, make sure people knew that they could apply for the benefit. So, we don't know what the dollar amount will be, um, until the levies are certified, but.
Yeah.
It's good news.
So how does that program work and who's eligible?
Right, that's what I was gonna ask.
Well, I, I didn't bring all the qualifications with me, but, um, you have to meet certain income requirements. And, uh, for veterans, they have to be a hundred percent, um, service-connected disabilities. And then your value has to be, um, below two hundred percent of the median, at or below.
That, that surprises me that there are that many people that would qualify with, especially with a hundred percent disability.
There were a few that, um, actually were kicked out because they, um, didn't meet the, uh, median value amount. Uh, but there are only nineteen of those this year, as opposed to last year, when it was a hundred and fifty percent. There were sixty-six that were, um, disqualified. So raising that number certainly helped.
Helped in the qualifications.
Yep.
Well, great.
That's it.
Great. I guess you're expanding or in the process of putting a, uh, registration in the, uh, office at Kuna.
We are working on that. Um, the city of Kuna requested it, and we jumped on board and said absolutely, we're ready to serve. Uh, they're building a building for us, and we're working with the sheriff's office to also offer driver's license services there. And the sheriff is also, uh, working with us to put driver's license, uh, facility in Star, where we already have, um, a D M B office.
Right.
So that'll be right next to the city building in Kuna?
Yep, they're building a building, and hopefully it'll be done sometime mid-year, shortly after.
Well, good. Well, thank you. Thank you. Now we have some, uh, tax cancellations that are not cancellations or adjustments, but we call them cancellations. Uh, there's a number of them here, too.
Yes, ninety-four.
Yeah. All right, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the tax cancellations as listed on the agenda, which includes two tax cancellations for twenty-twenty-two, ninety-four tax cancellations for twenty-twenty-three, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that.
Okay. You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. All right, we have a treasurer's report, and we, the treasurer's not here, but one of, one of her top deputies is.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners?
Yes.
Well, we just wrapped up our, excuse me, our fiscal year, and so we have our September month-end report, and I have a couple of copies. And so this is a good time to just kind of reflect on, um, how the investments did this year. And, uh, I remember last March coming up with an estimate based on what we had seen the prior twelve months with the yield and, uh, what we expected to see going forward. And of course, with our portfolio, with the bonds that we own, we know exactly what those will pay. So that's easy for us to estimate that. Excuse me. Uh, but, but looking back, um, at that time in March of twenty-twenty-two, the average yield over the prior twelve months in our L G I P, for example, which is where bulk of our money is held. In fact, the average amount we had in L G I P at that time was a hundred and eighty-one million, five hundred thousand, and the average yield was point one-four-nine-five. And that sounds extremely low now in the current rate environment we're in. And so based on all of that, and, uh, we, we estimated that we'd receive about one point nine million, just a little over one point nine million. And as you can see, looking at that blue chart, we actually had eleven point four billion that came in, and that's a result of the tremendous increase in the, the Fed funds rate, uh, which helped us out quite a bit. Uh, this doesn't reflect the full picture, the eleven point four, because a lot of these bonds, well, all of these bonds have accrued interest. So it's earned during this time period, uh, but we haven't received the money. So for instance, if we have a bond that pays twice a year and we expect a payment in October, well, we've earned that, uh, the bulk of that interest, uh, in the current fiscal year. And, and there was about eight hundred and seventy-six thousand, uh, of accrued interest that just hadn't been paid out yet. So, uh, one of the things I, I wanted to point out here that kind of highlights is on the very second page of this report, I just thought it was interesting here, you could, if you scroll, uh, look down toward the bottom there, you see our treasury coupon securities. And we happen to own two of those. And if you look at the purchase date, it's just a coincidence that we purchased, uh, exactly two years ago to the day, uh, one of the, the bonds. And as you can see, if you, if you look over to the right on the third column, from the end on the right, it shows the yield to maturity. And the, and, uh, the one that we purchased on September twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-one, the yield was point five-five-two. Not even, it was a half a percent, just barely over half a percent. And then on September twenty-eighth of this year, just a couple of weeks ago, we purchased one. The yield was four point seven-four-six, so a huge increase. And, uh, that's just the environment we're in right now. We're not sure how long that'll go on. Uh, it's anticipated, though, that we'll see high rates for, uh, some time to come. And of course, that's dependent on other factors. Uh, I, I recall, uh, last month talking about our estimate, uh, for our fiscal year twenty-four, and it was around nine, nine million. So we'll see in the end how we do on that one. Uh, we had one maturity that came in this month. Uh, that's a few pages back, past the, uh, blue chart and past the maturities total, which shows those bar graphs. Under maturities and expected calls, you may have seen this, and I just wanted to explain it because, uh, on this particular one, it, it's a very short page, i- if you can see this one. And it just shows what matured in the month. And these, this is bond math, so it can be a little bit confusing. If you look at the net income to the far right, it shows a net income of negative one hundred forty-seven thousand, three hundred seventy-five. And a lot of times, people can see something like this and think there was a loss there, but it's really not a loss. If you look at the details on this, uh, we purchased this in twenty-nineteen. And right in the middle, it shows that. And the, and the, uh, the coupon at that time was three point three-seven-five. And of course, we bought it at a time when the rates had gone down, so we paid a premium on this. And because we do cash accounting here at the county, we don't recognize that premium until maturity. And you can see that here, the par value is three million. So at the end of that bond's life, and when it matures, you're gonna get back your three million. But because we paid three million, that, the book value there, three million, one hundred ninety-eight thousand, we, we purchased at a premium because the rates had moved. So I just wanted to point that out because it, we, we never take a loss when we hold something to maturity. We just don't get the full stated rate of the coupon, which is three point three-seven-five. We'll make something less than that, but it is a positive, positive number. Uh, other than that, we're just, uh, continuing to kind of plug along with our investments. We, uh, reinvest the, uh, we allocate the, the funds to the, um, in, in fact, that's probably a good thing to point out here. At the very back of this, of these reports, we show the monthly operation and funds. And you're familiar with that. That comes from the clerk's office, and we balance to this daily. And then at the end of the month, when we do this report, we'll compare their total dollar number to what we have in the treasurer's office with these investments. And any offage is noted on the, on the back page. And in this case, we were, we were off to them by four hundred twenty-three dollars and nine cents. And that's just a, a normal kind of accounting item. You'll cross a month, and so, uh, they will usually, um, balance to us the very next. And so they will usually balance to us the very next day unless another new item comes up. But one thing to notice here on the very second to last page, in fact, I see, I think Commissioner Daly had it in the prior one. And that's it, Commissioner Beck, you see where we're off and it says not balance highlighted in yellow. So the treasurer's cash book has three hundred and eighty-four million, four hundred ninety-seven. Monthly operation and funds is three hundred and eighty-four, four hundred ninety-six, slight offage. And what that means is if you go back to the monthly operation and funds and you see all these totals on the far right column, it'd be a few pages just prior to that. This, this concept's a little hard to understand sometimes because of the way the county does all this. But all of this money here is actually represented in the total portfolio here. So for instance, if you look about halfway down that first sheet, you have solid waste. And their ending cash on September thirtieth was a little over twenty-eight million. So if you go look at our portfolio, the entire portfolio, we have all this invested in various investments. We have cash, you know, money markets, treasuries, LGIP. What, what this basically means is that twenty-eight million, just, just a little over twenty-eight million of all of this investments belongs to his earmarked for, for solid waste. So they have about nine point five percent of the total portfolio. So I know that comes up, I think, from time to time and is a little bit confusing the way the county does that. But, but that's how we balance to the auditor. We balance to our bank accounts, to our investments and to the auditor every day.
Okay.
So I think that's it for updates. If you have any further questions.
Is there any questions from the board?
No, yeah, one more question is the, is the fund, fund balance, individuals, and that's.
Yeah. Okay, all right. Well, thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah. Okay, moving on, we have some contracts to consider. Starting out with the Expo Idaho contracts is for interim events. I'll accept a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the four interim event agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second. Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 We have Barbara Park Education and Event Center, an event.
I move to approve the one Barbara Park Education and Event Center agreement as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
Thank you. You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Now we have some, a number of agreements. Most of these agreements are renewals. There's forty-three agreements. Any questions or discussion on any of these agreements? If not, I will accept a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the forty-three agreements, agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Is there a second to the motion? I'll second that. Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 We have weekly indigent items. I'll accept a motion on weekly indigent items.
I move to accept the recommendations of the indigent services staff as listed on the summary of cases dated October tenth, twenty twenty-three and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, thank you. That concludes our agenda today unless there's any items that need to be brought before the board while we're in session. Hearing that, thanks for being here. Hearing none, we'll, we'll be in recess. Well, good morning. Today is the tenth day of October. The time is ten fifty-eight. No, ten fifty-two. Okay, the Ada County Commission is in session, sitting as the Board of County Emergency Medical Services District. For our open business meeting, all three commissioners are present. Could you identify yourself for the record over here?
Myself.
No, behind it.
Oh.
Wade Steele.
Sandra Steele.
Okay.
Beau Madamir.
Matt Reed, Commissioner's Office.
This is the Duncan Communications.
IT guy.
Kate Cahill, paramedics.
Kate Cahill.
Sean Rain, paramedics.
Okay. All right, ma'am. Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, there are not.
Okay, we have a recognition, employee recognition. I've asked Commissioner Davidson if he can read the recognition.
All right, well, this is for Kate Cahill for twenty-five years of service. Kate was hired full-time as an EMT in nineteen ninety-eight and within a year and a half went through advanced EMT program and was promoted to advanced EMT in April of two thousand. She didn't spend much time in that role as she quickly began training to become a paramedic. She successfully completed the paramedic program and was promoted in March of two thousand and one. Kate became a field training officer in February of two thousand and seven and trained many of our new employees for a little over ten years. In October twenty sixteen, Kate accepted a promotion to quality assurance captain and serves in this role today. She is responsible for ensuring that our providers are adhering to the high standards of care we have at Ada County Paramedics and helping those folks continue to grow. Thank you, Kate, for twenty-five amazing years of service to Ada County Paramedics and our community. Congratulations.
Well, thank you very much.
Is there anyone who wants to say anything?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, good morning. Kate's, you know, I can remember Kate and I were talking during regular open business meeting about, you know, twenty-five years. I was still a fairly new employee twenty-five years ago and she and I worked on ambulances back then. You know, I think I was Kate's supervisor.
Yes, yeah.
Several years. So obviously we've known each other for a long time. But Kate's been an amazing person and employee for all these years, you know. As you can see, she started out, actually before nineteen ninety-eight, you were a reserve. When did you start as a reserve?
It was in ninety-seven.
Ninety-seven, yeah.
It was like ten months, I believe, yeah.
So ten months as a volunteer with our organization before she got hired and then moving up through the ranks. And now she, in her QA job, you know, makes sure that we're all doing things the way that we should and keeping people safe and making sure that the bills go out the door the way they should. And so we're, we're very thankful for, for everything Kate's done for the department.
Well, thank you, yeah. It's been a, I tell people I grew up here in Ada County Paramedics and that's basically true. So it's been a, it's been a good employer to me and, and it's been a lot of learning in more ways than one. So, yeah, yeah, fantastic.
It's always amazing when you meet somebody and you watch, you know, their kids grow up and.
Yeah.
The whole nine yards.
It's a, it's a, yeah, I still am in disbelief. It's been twenty-five years, but.
Well, that's what happens.
It does, yeah, yeah.
So who do you have with you here today?
My, my parents, Wade and Sandy and my boyfriend Beau. And, yeah, and so they're just here to celebrate with me, so.
Good celebration.
Yeah, thanks very much. Appreciate it.
Come over here, we'll get a picture and give you the award. Come on in.
Huh?
You want to take a picture? Yes.
Sure.
Okay.
Everybody scoot over a foot.
Scoot over a little bit.
Oh, yeah.
You guys have this down, huh?
Oh, yeah, that's pretty good, yeah, well.
Okay, ready, one, two, three, and another one. Big smiles. Come on, big smiles. There we go.
On behalf of Cincinnati County, I want to present this award to you for your twenty-five years dedicated service.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Yes, absolutely.
Do one more with the picture.
Oh, sure, sure. Thank you. Yeah.
Is it B? How you spell your name?
Bo. B.O.
B.O. I have a grandson named Bo.
Yes, we have. Somewhere.
I'm thinking about my beautiful girl.
Come over here.
B.E.A.U. Yeah. Okay.
Okay, almost got everybody in. Here we go. One, two, three. Very nice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Good to meet you.
Good to meet you. Good to see you.
Thank you.
Yeah, raise up, raise up for people.
Tell her to stay another twenty-five years.
I would love to, but.
All right, you gotta stay another twenty-five.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you, yeah.
Thanks a lot.
Okay. Well, that was good.
Yeah. It's always fun to watch, you know, people progress through the department and.
Oh, yeah.
Somebody that I've known for a long time.
I'll bet, yeah.
Yes, being successful, it's good.
Yeah.
Okay, well, moving on, we have a claims journal. I think accept a motion to the claims journal.
Mr. Chairman, I move to authorize payment of the claims journal. Claims as listed on the claims journal dated October sixth, twenty twenty-three regarding EMS expenditures.
Second. Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries personnel actions.
I'll move to approve the personnel actions as listed on the agenda and that the summary sheet remain on file in the Commissioner's office.
I second the motion.
You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries, okay, we have now a couple of agreements. Agreement number one five, one six oh, two dash two three, amendment and renewal agreement between Ada County Emergency Medical Services District and captive billing. Okay, any questions? Not, I'll accept a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the two agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
Second. Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now, get Sean to give us an EMS update.
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, good morning. Interesting, captivate billing is that company that we are outsourcing half of our bills to. And through utilizing them and the work done in our billing office, we came in two million dollars over our projected revenue this year, which is a good thing. So that's working out really well for us. Outside of that, we had a new higher academy start last week. So that's what John Blake is actually down teaching today. That's why he wasn't here for, for Kate's recognition. We have ten new employees in, in that academy. We talked to them last Monday. It seems like a really good group of people, so we're, we're happy to have them here. We just finished our video laryngoscope training. So if you remember, we, we received a grant several months ago to buy these video laryngoscopes. So that training has been provided to field staff, so that's good. And outside of that, training is the word of the day because we also have block training this month. So all of our folks will be rotating through the block training with the fire departments throughout the course of the month. And if you remember from access, we had to expand it to a fourth week because we're, we're training over six hundred fifty providers, somewhere around six hundred seventy-two providers in the access system that we provide training for between us and the fire department. So a lot of work, but really rewarding, so that's really all I had to report.
Okay, well, good. Any questions of our EMS director?
How'd you feel the Kuna meeting went, or?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Davidson, I felt it went really well. That was fun going out there and talking to folks and seeing the recognition for Bernie Fisher. That's always an amazing thing. That's the, you know, I was in the Army and that's the closest I've ever been to an actual Medal of Honor because I certainly didn't do anything that heroic while I was in. But, you know, the other interesting thing about the Medal of Honor is if you're wearing that, even if you're a private, that, you know, you have, the officers salute you if you're wearing that medal, so pretty cool. And a neat story from Bernie Fisher.
Yeah, that was a great, yeah, it was a great story. And we wanted to, of course, highlight that so that there's.
There's a lot of people that move into Kuna, they, they, they see the Bernie Fisher Park, but they don't know who Bernie Fisher is.
Yeah, yeah.
So we want to sort of.
Pretty amazing.
Give him a chance to get to know him a little bit.
And as you said, the significance of that.
Oh, yeah.
Medal. And it's, it's, it's awarded by the president, but it is the Congressional Medal.
Yeah, yeah.
Which is, which is an interesting.
Yeah, yeah. So it's a neat thing. I, I, I don't even recall meeting anybody while I was on active duty that was wearing that, that medal, you know.
There's only been, I think, it was twelve or fifteen citizens of Idaho has ever got one of those.
Yeah, not many.
I think it's, I think it's twelve.
You have to, you have to do a lot. While I was in combat medic school, they, they had all of the medics that had received the Congressional Medal of Honor, you know, and there's stories on these little placards on the walls. So it was pretty interesting to go around and read those stories about people that had been shot so many times. They started IVs on themselves so that they could keep going, taking care of people. Just amazing stories.
Oh, yeah.
I saw Ridge, I just saw that movie.
Yeah.
I don't know if he got the medal or not, but.
I, I think he did. I can't recall, though, but I think he did.
Then who'd you have with you at the meeting? Was that the chief of fire of Kuna?
Yeah, TJ Lawrence is the Kuna Fire Chief. And it's an interesting thing out there because TJ doesn't report to the city or the council in any way. They're a separate district, a fire district. But, you know, Joe Steer used to be the chair of their fire commission and now Greg McPherson, who's the president of the council, is the chair of the fire commission, so.
Gotta keep it in-house.
And, you know, I worked with a lot of those guys over the years as a medic running college with them down there, so. It was a great meeting.
Well, it was a good meeting. That, we're, we're trying to reach out a little bit to other communities.
Yeah.
That works, worked, worked real, worked well for us. For us at NIND.
They seem to be really good about working with the county and, you know, having a good relationship with us, you know, building a building for the motor vehicle registrations there. And everything seems to be working out well with EMS and fire.
Yeah, things are going really well for us and fire out there. The crews like it and, you know, working together all the time is so much different than, you know, just kind of randomly coming through the station and trying to get to know the personalities. They all work together really closely now.
Well, it's nice to have them back in the family.
Yeah, 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 true.
They're maybe a little skeptical about the jail, but maybe the sheriff will talk to them some more.
Yeah.
Oh, all right. All right. Well, anything else?
No, sir.
Well, if there's nothing else to be brought before the board, we'll be in recess.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.